Excuse me.
Okay, it is six thirty. I will call to order the work session for the city of Tenino Tuesday, August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. We're staying in the work session. Elaine just told me something.
Whoops, sorry there. I didn't have my mic on. So I'll call to order the regular work session for the city of Tenino for Tuesday, August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Open the work session. Elaine just mentioned to me that Troy had told her that Tenino Telephone Company had let us use a significant amount of their heavy equipment to do some work at the ball field and he wanted to acknowledge them for their letting us use their equipment.
Oh, that's great.
As they always do, they help us out when we need their help and especially with equipment like that that we don't have. So a big thanks to the Tenino Telephone Company for letting us use their equipment to do that work over there. I don't have a lot since the last meeting. I would say Nancy will probably talk more about this, but we are finally up to date on our reconciliations. As you can see, we have the one for July for you. So it's a big, a big milestone, at least in my book, to get those caught up because that's what we base everything we do on financially is on those. So that I think, you know, I put something on Facebook. I thank our Springbrook, the, what's his name? I always forget his name. The Springbrook gentleman Chad from Springbrook who helped us, helped us get those up to date and then Nancy who's really done a good job for us to finish that up after she came onboard. It was amazing the work that goes into those month by month. One little thing on there when it's that far back and take you a whole day to try to reconcile one little, one little thing. So it was quite an undertaking and I'm very proud that we've got that, got to that point. Let's see. Just for the public's knowledge, we're gonna be, we had to amend the consent calendar for our last meeting, so I'll put that under the consent calendar. So when we approve the consent calendar, I will include both of those things on there. I did want to read this. I don't know what the proper time to do it is, but Ronna asked me to read this to everybody, so I'll start that out here and we'll can talk a little bit more about it. It says, Dear Mayor Waterson, this letter is to notify you of my retirement from my position with the city of Tenino effective eight twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five. This has been a hard decision to finally put in writing. As you know, I had originally planned to retire at the end of May. I really enjoyed my time here with the city and thankful for my coworkers who have made my stay enjoyable and fulfilling. I have tried to make the transition easy and have left directions to everyone and they do have my phone number to call me anytime. It was great working with all of you. I will treasure the memories and experiences throughout my life. I wish all the best in the coming years. Regards, Ronna Barnes.
Oh.
Yeah, and I told her today that, you know, since I've been here on the council, she's been the constant around this place and been through some tough times, some good times and some tough times. And no matter if we agree on every, everything everybody does, she was very valuable to me and helped me along. So I will, I will truly miss her being here.
I think everybody will.
Yeah. So anyway.
I guess we're not gonna approve that. She's got a statement.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see. Just looking at what's on our agenda. The six-year transportation plan, we can just kind of, I'm just gonna go over the stuff we have on there tonight.
I wanna, I'd like to say something first.
You have something?
When I looked at this agenda yesterday, none of this was on there. And I believe it's the law that you have to have it on there twenty-four hours before the meeting, I believe. And I, was it on there yesterday?
No.
Let's see.
What's that?
I think it's something that we need to.
We talked about it this morning.
Wait, see, it's just that the public needs to know what our agenda's gonna be ahead of time, not the day of the meeting. See what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
And I believe that, I believe it's a state, it's a law that we have to have it there twenty-four hours before the actual meeting. So just from now on, you know, let's try to do better, have it, have it on there so that not only, not only the council can look things over, but the public knows what we're gonna be talking about.
Okay, yep.
Sorry.
Thank you. No, that's okay. The six-year, we're gonna be looking, the second vote on the six-year transportation improvement plan. There were some questions on that about the old ninety-nine and why that was on there. And I verified with Troy, that's because there's still a section that needs to be completed, so that's why that's on the plan.
Okay.
And then the other part was the trail extension was on there too, out to the, towards Ag Park. And we are doing engineering work on that, but that's on there. So when grants become available to do the actual work, that those, that would be on that list. So I think those two things were questioned last, last meeting.
Yeah, they were.
That was the, that was the answer I got from Troy. So I did check with that and that.
I think it was Jeff, I think it was, was it you?
I think Jeff.
I thought it was Jeff. But Jeff is not here. Can I?
Yeah. No, we're gonna excuse him. He's, he's in California. So he called me and let me know. So I got that on the consent calendar. Springbook Support Plus. We had this in the past when we were using them to do all our catching up, talking to Nancy. We feel like we need to keep their, this is kind of their, yeah, there's a basic plan and an expanded plan. They give you more help if you need it. And so we had talked about extending that. I think we paid him twenty thousand last year, but we asked him if we could just do six more months because we got our end of the year reporting, which Nancy hasn't done and some other, a lot of work just catching up. So we're gonna ask you to approve a six-month extension of that extra support.
That'd be ten thousand dollars.
Yeah. So five thousand this year and five thousand in January. I think originally they just wanted it all upfront, but I think Nancy must've talked him into. But anyway, so part of it will be on the next, next year's budget, but five thousand on this year's. Also, just think about it as we go down. November eleventh council meeting is on Veterans Day, so we wanted to check in to see if we wanted, it's a holiday, so it won't be, the office won't be open, but if we want to move the meeting or what we want to do with that one or keep it there.
Well, it, it, it's November eleventh and we're gonna have the comprehensive plan. Plus, we're gonna be working on budget, aren't we?
We got a budget. That's.
I'll change the budget calendar if we don't have the meeting, but I wanted to make sure it was brought to everybody's attention. I didn't know if anybody.
Oh, you're asking to move the meeting or just not have it? Because if we don't have it, that's gonna push us to the last, the last couple of days of December. I don't think it's a good idea to.
Because we only have one meeting in December.
Yeah.
So we need to have two in November.
We only have one meeting in?
Typically only have one in December, but.
Because, because it falls on really close to Christmas, the second one.
But we can look, we can look at doing that too. We can change that second one. If we need a second one to finalize anything.
I don't care if it's on Veterans Day.
I mean, I don't care.
I'm a veteran. I'm a pro.
Okay. So we can leave, we'll just discuss it and I just wanted to let you know what was going on and what the situation was. So when we get to it, we can discuss whether we want to just leave it the same date or what. Trying to think what else we got just for general discussion.
General discussion is the, the power stations that we have in that. That saw something on Facebook. I didn't read all of it, but the people were asking about where the money come from.
The EV charger maybe?
Yeah, the EV chargers. The question that came up to me, and we never even talked about it, is who gets the revenue off of those chargers?
We do.
The city?
We do?
Yeah.
What are we charging?
Uh, we haven't set a rate yet. I'm, I think the Ag Park's at there. It's a thirty-two cents a kilowatt hour, I think is what. I was thinking we'd keep it the same. Theirs is, that's pretty comparable to what.
So are we, are we getting it from them as well?
Yep. We pay the electric bill, so anything above what the costs are to.
So when are we gonna see the, the line item in the budget?
We'll have to put it in there. I think I'll, I'll talk to them to see when they, how the revenue, I don't know how often they get paid for, if that's monthly or quarterly. So I'll have to ask.
These are questions that did not come up during the contract because I don't think any of us even thought about it.
Yeah, I know.
I know I did.
I think we talked about the fact that the city was gonna be getting the money from the chargers.
They just managed to because this, they, because all the power's going through their, their meter. So they're, they're managing the payment of the bill. And so anything beyond what it costs them to, for their electric bill will come to us.
And somebody else, you know, my idea for that money is just to keep it as a rolling, rolling on number so that when it comes time for either upgrades or maintenance, we don't have to go different anywhere else for that money.
Yep.
So these are things that we probably should get taken care of pretty quick.
Yep.
Good idea.
Yeah, and they do have a five-year maintenance agreement.
That's a good idea.
Once in a while. The five lifts.
And we'll do the same with this one, whatever money, we'll all be in the same.
Yeah.
And I was thinking they were on the other side of that ditch. They see where they are now. That's fine. I was thinking they took up two of those parking spots right outside the door and that's, because there's not a lot of handicap parking there, but they're on the other side of the trench, so that's okay.
So those ones behind the sandstone are basically ready to go. We're just waiting for PSE to make the power from the pole to the meter. It's been inspected and everything. I, I called PSE and requested, requested the connection, so I haven't heard back from them the day that they'll be, do that, but should be soon that they will be active.
I didn't hear anything.
See, that's up, when, when that part of, when our part is done, it's something that we should get out to, get out to everybody so they understand that, you know, grant money is, because it is taxed dollars. We've been paying into this stuff for decades. We're trying to getting a little bit of it back.
Well, that's what I tried to, tried to express because it was on Facebook and I usually don't respond on Facebook, but I was just trying to be factual and let people know because it was, a lot of people were responding. Just like, you know, you may disagree or agree with the state decision to fund those things, but they, it was decided. So we didn't get it, it was gonna go some other community, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we, they gave us the money for it, which overall we, we put into it. So we find.
Trying to bring some money back.
I just hope people use them, you know, that's what I.
So this time, once we have all that part taken care of, who, we now know that, that we get the revenue from it, how much we're gonna charge, and then what we're gonna do with that money, set a line item for maintenance or whatever this money decides at that time so that the general public knows exactly how that's going to work.
And now help me remember, Nancy, that we, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Dragon Wheel and see how, make sure we know how we're gonna get reimbursed for whatever, beyond whatever they make. And we'll get a line item in our budget for the rest of this year to, to capture that. And I know there's a question about insurance too, so I will check in and see if there needs to be, we need to notify our insurance carrier that we've had these chargers now. I don't know if it's, will be any different, but I'll just let them know.
Well, probably will, it probably will have to be more for theft because of the copper wiring.
Maybe.
Look at the ones over at the Lacy, what used to be the mall in Lacy. I don't know what they call it anymore.
Yeah.
But every now and then, those things get destroyed and they just try to get the copper out of it.
Yeah. So I'll check with them.
It's been amazing. Nobody died yet from electricity.
If I understand right, they won't change the rates for this year just for the little bit, but it would be something they would add it on to our, our next year's policy if it's required. But I will definitely let them know that we have.
Because that's gonna be part of what, what the rate's gonna be charged.
What else? Anybody else got anything for the good of the order? We'll go, if you don't, we'll go to reports.
Do we know how many people in Tenino, in the city of Tenino have electric cars?
I don't know. I see quite a few coming through town, but I don't, you could probably look with the state. I think they have records.
I know, I know. Two and one doesn't live here. Chris Hansen. The mayor and Chris Hansen are the only two that I know. Chris Hansen used to be the owner, owner of the time machine.
Yeah.
And just to explain.
But he lives Lake Lawrence or something.
There's two down my road.
What?
There's two, two Teslas down my road.
There's quite a few. I've seen other ones around town. Tyler, Worthland, I think.
I've seen a few, but I didn't know they lived in town.
And a lot of people drive hybrid too.
Yes.
But I'll just explain just for people's information. Most of the time, people that own cars charge at home because paying thirty-six cents a kilowatt versus twelve cents at home, most of these chargers are really used to attract people that are coming to town to visit.
Right.
Somebody has an electric car, they know there's a charger there, they're more likely to stop and say, hey, I'm gonna charge for an hour and look around.
Why don't we keep these slow?
Yeah.
You know, fast chargers.
You know, since we have two back here, it might be a good idea to put a sign out on the main road.
Yeah, they do see chargers some, some, sometimes. And I did put them on, there's an app that most electric vehicle owners use, and I made sure they were on that app. It's kind of covers all the chargers versus just the brand that we have. So I made their, on there because that's what, when people are traveling, that's where they look to see where chargers are. So, but that is part of the whole plan is to get, try to get the word out as much as you can. And I can say, I'm guessing they're not gonna be heavily used. I mean, it's gonna take a while for people to know they're there and, and just as more EVs come online, they'll be used more, but it's not gonna be, you're not gonna see cars parked in the line probably.
Yeah.
They even have e-bikes that can use those.
Yeah, they can use those chargers, yeah. Okay, any other things? Anybody wants to bring up for the? We, if not, we'll go to reports. Chamber of Commerce, I did get a report from George.
Oh, did you? Because I didn't.
Let me real quick.
You probably sent it to me email and I looked at it somewhere.
Is that true?
Where is it? Here it is. Says, Hi, Mayor Waterson and Councilmember Goodeback. So I guess he was sending this email to us. Tenino Chamber, the next Chamber Lunch Forum will be Wednesday, September seventeenth at noon at the Sandstone Cafe. Speaker will be Michael Day, the new CEO of Experience Olympia and Beyond. Study, the next study meeting will be September nineteenth, eight to nine thirty AM at the Corey House, followed by a tour of Wolf Haven International. Reminder, everyone is welcome to attend study. Thurston EDC, the next EDC event will be the Real Estate Forum, September twenty-fifth, eleven AM to one thirty PM, held at South Puget Sound Community College Lacy Campus. For more information, www.thurstenedc.com. So that is his report. Regional Library is not here. Civil Service Commission, we did get a new person from the Civil Service. I haven't got to Swarren yet, but we've got an, got an additional member there which will be helpful. Finance Committee, we didn't meet since last meeting, I don't think.
No.
Planning Commission, you wanna speak for the Planning Commission or have anything?
Okay. Planning Commission. So a couple of things happened in the last Planning Commission. We talked about the Ag Park and the current zoning that it has and whether to do public semi-public with an Ag overlay or move to light industrial with an Ag overlay. The Planning Commissioners were fairly convinced that the current zoning with an Ag overlay will do everything that we need it to do right now. If there is a use case in the future, like we're not getting business for whatever reason, because somebody would rather see a light industrial overlay there, or light industrial zoning with an Ag overlay, we'd love to see it. But until that point, the commission decided to keep it public semi-public with that agriculture overlay. I can't really answer a whole lot of questions about Ag overlay. I'm still a little bit fuzzy on exactly what it does. But I, so I will have you direct any of those questions to the planner. Other than that, we reviewed the final portion, which was the environmental section, had a long discussion on that. And we decided that the, the public hearing for the comprehensive plan is going to happen on September seventeenth. That is a Wednesday. And that's when we'll have the public hearing on the comp plan.
And that's here in the chamber?
Yes. Yep, right here at City Hall.
We need to get that on social media.
Yeah, I need to get that out. I'll just add, are you done or?
Yeah, that was it. Yeah.
There'll probably be more coming, coming back to you about that overlay stuff. I just got some email correspondence between the EDC and our Amy Evans Harding from, this are doing our marketing out there. She had some comments on about what she would like to see out there.
Sure.
So you may be getting some, the more, more information on these others' opinions on that overlay thing. So, but it is a little complicated to understand how that all, all works together. But anyway, so you'll see some more probably comments on that one.
Yeah, we'd be happy to see it. I think, I think the big loss was, or not the big loss, but the big kind of debate for us was, okay, it, we can change it, but show us the use case for that. You know, we'd like to see a little bit more about why a change is needed. So I don't know, maybe if somebody from the EDC would like to, would like to come to the Planning Commission and kind of tell us, hey, this is the, this is what we're looking at. Or perhaps the marketing agent would like to come out and be like, hey.
I think Haslam and Amy.
Yeah. I don't think they wanted to change the main zoning. I think she just had comments on the overlay and what, what the wording was on the overlay part of it.
Okay.
Allow some flexibility on what kind of businesses went out there under that overlay. So I don't know, I don't remember her saying that we should change to industrial or from, you know.
Got you.
But anyway, I think it's mostly focused on the overlay part of it and the wording on that.
Mm-hmm.
So right, that should come back to you guys. I'm guessing on, I know our planner's already was involved in the email, so she's aware of what, what the discussion was. So she should be able to communicate that to you.
Okay. Sounds good. That's it. That's all I got. Any questions?
Nope.
Cool.
Adam, Carney. Yeah, C-A-R-N-E-Y.
Like Art Carney.
Public Safety Committee, anything from the Public Safety Committee?
No.
They are, I think our new officer is coming on at the start of this next paper, right, or first of the month.
First of the start of the year.
Yeah, that's what I, the chief said.
Next Monday, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Public Works Committee?
Um, I had a meeting with Troy today. Um, they're working, he's working on the budget and almost has his portion done. They're doing a lot of work around the school because they need to paint crosswalks and signs for the schools and trimming all bushes that the bus routes take so that there's no.
So you can see the signs.
Yeah. And then they have to check all those sewer things for the schools.
Okay, pass the problems at the schools, yeah.
Yeah, because they use chemicals for cleaning and whatnot. Ball Field number one, that work, I believe he said, was completed. They're working on Field number three and they're waiting on the grant for Field number two. And all the sledge hauling has been done and that they shouldn't have to do it for another three to five years.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is good news. That's good news.
Yes, it is. For what it costs, yes.
Well, not only that, it's, it makes a big stink out there.
Yeah.
I went by one day and I could smell it.
Yeah.
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 At all.
And the neighbors just complain.
Yeah.
And that's all I have.
Any questions for that?
No.
Chief of Police, I didn't get any specific thing just besides the budget they're working on, their budget too. And the new officer will be starting soon. I think the kind of they mentioned, she's gonna need some field training before she actually is assigned, even though she was an officer in McLaury. They said she, she's gonna need a little bit of time in field training, so.
She needs to learn the area.
Yeah, so anyway, she'll be assigned to do some ride-alongs with one of the other officers for a period of time until they're comfortable with her knowledge and abilities. Other than that, I haven't heard anything major going on in the city that's happening. Public Works, I think, kind of got a report from that already. Haven't heard anything from our building inspector, just day-to-day stuff. I know Chris Howell, they moved into their building down there, I think, just recently.
Edward Jones?
Yeah, Edward Jones Building.
Yeah.
Looks like. So that should be close to be done, being done. Park Specialist, trying to think. I mean, Jessica's, she's been, she's been helping with grants and she did, I'll give her a shout out again. She spent some time and found, I think it was ninety thousand dollars or a little over ninety thousand dollars that was payments for the Ag Park that we hadn't submitted reimbursements for. And so it basically will zero out our grant from that. So she did a great job by finding those because it took some time, I think, to dig through, look at all of them, make sure they all got paid. So thank you to Jessica for taking the time and going through those and finding that. That's, that was a big one. And that was to the best of her ability. Just so you know, she says, I can't find any record of it, so I'm gonna send it in. And they can say we, we paid these already. But she, she's pretty sure that she could find no record of us sending those in. So we'll see what happens, but still. Clerk Treasurer?
So I get, you guys all have a packet?
Turn your mic on if it isn't on.
Everyone has a packet. Hopefully you kind of understand what, so the first page is our fund balances. Second page are our bank balances and the totals for those should match. We are going to be changing the petty cash fund. It needs some work. And I just attached the first page of each bank statement, savings checking, our trust and then our LGIP, which is an investment plan for local governments that we have some funds in. So if you, if you want the whole bank statement, let me know. If you have any questions on how this should reconcile, let me know. Or if you have any questions about details, you can let me know and I can email you more details or answer your questions on this if anybody has any questions on that. The mayor went over the question on the, on the Veterans Day council meeting. If we change that, we're going to have to change the budget calendar, which I haven't sent out to you guys yet. Troy's got it and the mayor's got it. And then, did anyone have any questions on the Springbrook contract that we're looking to sign for ten thousand? No? So that's about all I have for today.
Still working on the IRS stuff, right?
Still working on the, I got, yet another letter that gave me a different amount that we owe for previous years for the IRS. So still working on that.
We, and I, just so you know, I think when we talked and tell me if this is wrong, we decided we're just gonna pay it because we still keep getting interest. And if we
Yes.
find out that we didn't owe it, we'll get a refund, but we keep getting penalties on top of it when we don't pay it. So.
As long as you're not paying it, you're gonna keep.
So we're just gonna think, pay it, even though we tried to, tried to get it settled and figured out. It's just taken so long. I think it's, yeah, the best is to pay it.
Right, because every time I talk to them, I'm getting a different answer and then I get a different letter.
See, that's, that's what's so scary about it. You know, how can you trust that they even are taking what, you know, it's just, that's so scary to me.
Yeah, and you should be scared. It, it's kind of ridiculous, but.
Really does.
There's nothing we can do to fix it. So I think that we should just pay what I got on the last letter and then move forward. When I have some time, I can reconcile it better and then I can call back and talk to them if I think that we paid it in error. The last one is thirteen thousand dollars in change.
So it's gone from just ten to seventeen, now it's thirteen?
Yes. I believe that's the trail so far.
In about, in about two or three weeks, you've gotten over this.
Yes.
So I just.
So, yeah, there's not a lot I can do about that one.
No, there isn't.
Other than, I mean, it's gonna take.
We are at their mercy, let's face it.
There's a law that says, we make the mistake, you make the mistake, we still win.
Yep. It doesn't matter. So, yeah, we're still working on that. I thought there was one more thing, but I can't remember what it is. So.
Yeah, there's several things that were, I, I told you this before, every time you dig into something or something happens, it seems like you find two or three other things underneath it that require some fixing. So if we do have one, I don't know, wanna say anything about that. I'll let her decide whether.
The, the meeting that we have, that all of this is taken care of and everything is going smoothly. Can we have champagne?
Sure. Yeah. Let's crack a bottle.
I don't like champagne.
Well, you probably won't have to drink any in touch. Yeah, I did talk to Social Security Administration because Ronna had, had indicated that, they said they didn't receive wages for twenty twenty-four for her. And so I called Social Security Administration and apparently, and I don't know. apparently, and I don't know why exactly why, um, they have not received, um, our communication for wages for twenty twenty-four. So, I had to get an IDMe account, which was a struggle, because I had one under my, I already had one, but it had my old work email. And some, there was some sort of glitch, and it wouldn't change, and it wouldn't let me sign up. Anyway, that part's fixed. Um, I'm waiting for a letter from Social Security Administration, so that I can resend our twenty twenty-four wage information, um, so that Social Security Administration and IRS have it.
To me, that doesn't make sense. She must have gotten ten ninety-nine, so she could file her taxes every year.
No, she would get a W-two.
Well, a W-two, whatever.
She would get a W-two, but you have to send a W-three with the W-twos to Social Security Administration, and I believe also IRS. But I have to look into it, because I didn't do pay, I haven't done payroll in a long, long time.
I know.
Has, has anybody, any other employees found?
I have heard third-hand that one of our police officers may have had trouble getting his tax return to go through, but it did in the end. This is just third-hand information, so I would prefer it not to be official. And then, I heard from Rana and I heard from somebody else that they, their taxes were being held, but it's unknown whether the reason is this or something else. My suspicion is that somebody submitted them electronically, but didn't, wasn't here long enough to double-check that that went through. I wouldn't say that anyone's at fault for it. I think it was something that was
Transition.
Probably dropped the ball and the last person wasn't around to double-check that they received it. So, I don't wanna. Yeah, I mean, it's, uh.
Speculation is another word for assume.
Right. Um, yeah, I don't want to speculate that what happened, really, but, um, the administration said they have not received them, so they will be resubmitted as soon as I get the sign on to the FSA. Are there any other questions, comments? That's all I have for today.
Yeah, I didn't think of anything else. Uh, for the mayor's report, uh, not a lot of things. I've been trying to be here every day, just to deal with the day-to-day stuff as it comes up. But I did have a, uh, meeting with Express Bill Pay. That is part, they work with Springbrook to do electronic billing. You know how a lot of places send your billing? We're spending whatever cost to print, whatever cost to mail, and, uh, the staff time to stuff the envelopes. So, I did just get a general meeting with them to see what information they needed. And, uh, we're gonna have another meeting with, uh, uh, Jessica and probably Nancy, to talk to them about what it would cost and what that would look like to set up for people that want it, want it. Can have, uh, this electronic bill or have automatic withdrawals, so you don't even have to, a lot of my bills, I just, so hopefully.
I would love that.
Yeah, I would too.
I write two checks a month.
I know.
And that's one of them, my water bill, you know, I mean.
I'm sure there'll be some, a few people that won't, want to do that, and he said that they can do, allow for people to get a mail bill. But, uh, there's many, we'll, we'll see what it costs, but if it's cost-effective, I think a lot of people would like to have that available. So, we're gonna meet again soon about that and see, uh, see where we go with that. Civics Plus, this is another thing that it just wasn't updated, again, not put any blame. But, uh, our municipal codes, where we pass our ordinance, it's supposed to send that ordinance off to Unicode. It's called Civics Plus, it's the name of the company, but that's where our online codes. Well, they hadn't really got any updates since twenty nineteen on our municipal ordinance that we passed. So, I went back and it's, this is a pretty small one, because it's only, there's only like ten, because they don't, not every ordinance, like, certain ordinances, they don't, you know, doesn't go in there. But I, I've already identified the ones, and they said, just send them to us. Usually, they only update twice a year. He said, we'll just take care of the ones you've missed. And from now on, I've, I've told Nancy and everybody in the office that any time we pass the ordinance, we just email that to them the next day, just like, you know. And, uh, they'll just put them in a folder and.
No, is that true? Is there a way, if we, if we're looking up an ordinance and we want, is there a way we can access that Unicode, the Unicode?
Yeah, it's online. You can, that's where I was looking for the standard about the, yeah. So, anyway, it's all online, and to me, it's where people, some people that are savvy with this kind of stuff, that's where they look for information. Like, if somebody's doing, it's got all our building requirements on there and everything. Signs is another one that's on Unicode. So, we don't keep that stuff updated, and somebody's looking on there, they assume that that information is current, like it should be.
You just go to Unicode?
Unicode, yeah.
Unicode dot com?
You just look up, yeah, I'd put in, uh, Tenino Municipal Code when I did a search, and then we'll bring it up. So, anyway, we'll get that updated, uh, no extra cost or anything on that one. We, they just need to sit, be sent off and updated. So, uh, that was kind of a, something that I'd been thinking about for a while, so we did get that, uh, taken care of. Uh, we met with Frankie, I can't think of his last name, from the Thurston County Courts, who, uh, has been working with us to move services there. He's meeting with the, the courts, the state court system, I forget what it's called, AOC, Administrative Office of the Courts, I think, which is a state organization. I think it was either today or tomorrow. He's meeting with them to discuss the process. It's supposed to be a six months, there's supposed to be a six-month kind of
Turnaround?
Turnaround. It gives them time to get all their stuff in order. He is gonna ask if we can shorten that timeframe a little bit, if everything, because we have such a small caseload, it's not a lot of complicated.
We don't have a clerk anymore.
Yeah. So, anyway, he's gonna talk to them about that, and also, he said, if we needed the help, he would, he thought they would be willing just to, to come in and help us run the court for whatever little help we needed to keep, you know, that Rana did, that nobody else, you have to have special certification to do. So, uh, I think Maria can do a lot of the, this day-to-day stuff, but, uh, the things that require an actual certified, whatever it is. He said they would look at helping us, so we should know soon more about the court switch-over.
Mayor, uh, Rama isn't thinking that she would be able to volunteer at the time?
She said that we needed her, she would come in, whatever the day or something, to, to take care of, uh, recording or whatever the things were, where you have to be certified to be on the system. So, of course, she's, you know, more than willing to do that. I attended a Springbrook book, Springbrook webinar today, and there's, it's for the next couple of days about budgeting. They're just kind of going over how to use their system to help with your budgeting process, so that'll be helpful, uh, helpful for us, uh, moving forward, how to get Springbrook set up to do the budget. Uh, I did get an email today from the state auditor. I think, did we tell you last, uh, meeting that we're having another, another?
Did they start last week?
Go ahead. Anyway, I got a, I got an email saying they're doing their pre, pre-interviews, you know, they talk to you before to see what your concerns are. So, I set up a meeting. I don't, I'm guessing other people have got that, but do you have something to add?
I just had a quick comment, if that's all right. I, I was contacted by, um, the auditor who is doing our audits, the same one as last year, uh, that did the twenty twenty-three audit. And he is working on, um, there's some parameters for our single audit, which is our federal grants audit. That he thinks we can shorten that audit because of the amount, uh, of our federal grant that he's auditing. And therefore, he might be able to save us a little money.
Does it cut, it does cut our cost?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so, he's looking at that. I sent him our, uh, report on that grant today. Um, and he'll let me know as soon as he can, if he can, there, there's an abbreviated audit they can do if it's under a certain amount, so.
Good.
He's, they're trying for us.
But there's three, kind of three different audits this time, right, so, yeah. I think we talked about it.
We did.
That's all I had. Uh, is there any other questions for me, about anything? Okay, we'll go on to liaisons, be that, uh, Jeff's not here, I don't know if anybody has heard anything from Be That, but Solid Waste Advisory Board?
Nobody got another email. She's asking for the.
Yeah.
Reports?
Yeah, it should have been on this meeting.
She wants, uh, the city to sign the, I don't know exactly what it is. It's the Solid Waste Plan.
I still can't, I, I looked and I couldn't even find it.
We talked about our last meeting and something's never, never been asked before.
And I can't even find anything about it, any place that, so, I'll call her. I guess I'll just have to call her and say, hey, what, give us what everything is.
I was gonna say, I forwarded that email to you before, and I think it has her phone number on there.
And why are we signing something we've never had to sign before?
Yeah, yeah.
Not just what is it, but why?
Yeah.
And what's the cost?
She sent, she sent these, uh, she sent me a thing and said that all the other, you know, Lacey, Olympia, Tom Water, Yell, they've all signed it and returned it, except for Tenino.
So, it, it's a piece, it's ob, obviously a piece of paper of some kind.
It is, and I'm not sure exactly what it is, but it has something to do with the Department of Ecology Solid Waste Plan. I didn't understand.
It sounds more like something that they need to come to, come to a meeting and explain what they want. Because this is something we've never had to do before, and right now, it's thinking of another way for them to get money. And it's sort of, you know.
I think they've had a solid waste plan for some time. I was on that board, but I just don't know why. Anyway, okay, I'll call her and get clarification. And, yeah, I'll just bring some more information to you, if I find out anything specific.
I think it needs to come firsthand.
Okay. TCOM nine one one, I don't think there's anything, school board, anything new?
Yeah, fall sports has begun already, and then school starts next week.
I was supposed to go to the board meeting, but I was, wasn't able to get to it, so. Uh, TRPC?
TRPC, I, I reported about that at the last meeting, because it was just a legislative session. Uh, but finally, after years and years and years, you're talking about doing planning for e-bikes and, and, uh, e-vehicles and the flying vehicles and all the, all the stuff that's almost here, never mind the stuff that is here, uh, and moving forward, we have no plans. If you look at the plan that we just, just passed, it's all under old technology, none of the new stuff. We've been looking, we, we've been faced with this that we should have been able to slowly adapt to since Cadillac was the first car to have a forty gig hard drive on, and nobody seemed to ask why. And what is that going to bring about? And now, we're seeing what all that stuff is bringing about. Uh, you, some people used to make fun of me, call me George Jetson, until they actually saw what I was talking about. And then they didn't call me George Jetson anymore, but that's the age that we're living in right now, and we're not even close to ready for it.
Uh, did, did TBB have anything else on that?
No, TBB, no, TBB did not meet this month.
Okay. I think that is all of our reports, so we got like fifteen minutes. Is there anything else anybody wants to discuss until the regular meeting?
No.
Not, we will, uh,
Yeah, break, take it for the, uh, for, for the Food Bank Dinner on thirteenth?
I've got my tea, I, I think Judy was gonna run a bunch of them for us at the Lions Club.
Okay, because I have the twenty-five dollars apiece.
I have not mine yet. I'll talk to Judy about it.
And George Sharp is putting, uh, putting the word out, if, if anybody has anything that they could donate for the auction, that would help.
Well, I could find something for the auction. I don't know, I must have something, I don't know, I've got a bunch of stuff. Got a whole section down at the shop with stuff that I could donate.
There you go. Oh, I think you all got the note that on September second, the first Tuesday next month, the county commissioners are gonna do a reading of the, uh, proclamation for first responders.
For the what?
First responders.
And maybe this, okay.
Did you just send it outside to cook, or did you use the oven?
No, it's, uh, it's in the Instapot, so it's like pressure cooker.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, it saves all heat in there.
All right.
See you later.
See you later.
Do you have that lady's name from Solid Waste? Do you?
I have it, I, I know I got the email from you, so I'll, I'll find it, yeah.
I was gonna say, 'cause I can look it up.
I don't know why there can't be more posts like this on Facebook. It's from a lady here in Tenino, "To the high schooler that was at the Tenino Park today skateboarding and interacting with my nine-year-old son on his scooter. You were so sweet, and you made his time there so much fun. He felt so seen, and you hyped him up on his bunny hops. He was happy when he left. Thank you, thank you."
Yeah, that's definitely.
Yeah.
That was nice.
Yeah, we can't have more of that.
Yeah.
What do you for this year? Uh, I'm, I'm doing most of it, but his name is on it. Okay.
Jesse, did anybody hear about the?
But next year it's all him. Sure.
Car show for the Eagles?
I didn't hear a thing.
Uh, I don't hear.
Did you?
What?
Didn't hear anything about the car show, did the Eagles help last weekend?
I was there, it looked nice, it, it wasn't real big.
But I hadn't heard anything, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah. I'm not an Eagles member, so. It's very hush hush, don't you? You're not an Eagles member, hush hush hush.
Yeah. I don't think they have an auxiliary here anymore.
Do you?
No, Lady auxiliary, Tenino Eagles Lady auxiliary.
I don't know. I don't know.
Uh-uh.
They used to.
It, yes, they did, and for this year they couldn't even get enough people to work as.
Cause Dave Roberts, uh, you know, Dave Roberts, and that push to make their auxiliary happen in the first place.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Um, well, they couldn't get even, they have a lot of members, but they couldn't get anybody to hold the offices that are required to be held. So they closed it and transferred everybody to the Chehalis Eagles.
Hmm.
But that's what Centralia did also when they closed there, but they closed their old Eagles in Centralia.
Yeah, I saw that, that was a church.
Yes, huge. You ever go by there on Sundays?
No.
Oh, oh my gosh.
I know there, well, I know what roads you have to take on Sundays and turn it again.
Well, yeah, but if you go at the, if you go at the right time, it's okay. Um, yeah, that's huge.
Well, it's good.
Yeah.
To know I'm a registered minister.
Oh, really?
Hmm.
Very good. How many people have you married?
I haven't.
Oh, you have.
No. I just carried a registration.
Um.
I got a thing for parking in a car and then I got that uh, uh ID badge.
I was a, I was a loser, I was a loser today.
I keep thinking about it.
And those last two designated uh parking places for veterans, did you know that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I thought, well, that was nice.
Veterans and the cat, I qualify two spots.
They only seem the two spots for.
No, they have, they have uh.
They have handicap parking, yeah.
Yeah, I try and I qualify for that and I qualify for veterans.
Yeah, the veterans one that is even closer. I don't know, do both of them ha- oh, yeah. I think. Do both of them have that? I don't know either.
I don't know.
I know the one on College Street does, my sister wanted to go there, she's looking for a new sink. Kitchen sink. Would you want any of those?
Hey there. Got about five minutes, we'll get started.
I already think. She wanted one of those, what are they called, farm sinks? I like, I don't like those.
Yeah, I'd like to see it, this one that I like.
It fits in this way, there's no, your, you know, most sinks set down in. This one sets up a little higher and the, the edge of the sink is even with the edge of the cupboard account.
Yeah, that is one that I like where on the corner, they've got a separate thing for cleaning glasses.
Oh.
And it starts out one over here and slowly has a small downgrade. It's just a, it's not separated in two, I hate those.
Yeah.
You got, you got a lot of workspace.
Oh, yeah, that's what she wanted because she uses counters and a lot of big pots when she cooks
Mm-hmm.
for pot boxes and stuff and she uses one that she has this, don't fit in the double sinks.
Yeah, well, they do, it takes up the whole thing.
And I like, yeah. Yeah, it, it's just hard to.
Yeah, you use that pot to wash dishes.
Yeah. Yeah, but she does a lot of cooking with the American Indian stuff in Centralia.
Well, Tom was, Tom was living up to their, their uh, what they're saying to me, the fastest growing community in Thurston County.
Yeah, everybody, every street, it seems like you don't do something.
Yeah, especially Tom.
A car, yeah, that's what I mean in Tomor.
Mm-hmm.
All that in between Home Depot and Costco or Home Depot or Walmart.
My prediction, my prediction is that we're gonna have four hundred thousand before the end of this decade.
Really?
Yep.
Wow. That's.
That's why I always push an N K C comes around, we get the exchange from. They have, they can train it all over, but uh it's not the transmission that I'm worried about. It's the actual production, and neither can he is we.
Yeah.
And now with the, with the EVs coming on, I, I mean, this is my second e-bike.
Yeah.
The nice thing about this one is that I get about a hundred miles before I have to charge again.
Really?
Yeah, the other one, I got about thirty-five, forty.
Hmm? But they cost.
Well, I got, I got a deal on like, I gotta four grand, but to get the one that.
I was gonna say, you s- you see them in a large, little price range.
Oh, yeah, some of them, some of them are seventy, eight thousand dollars and all, that's all they'll do is twenty-eight miles. I'm not gonna spend that kind of money on that because it's got a BMW sticker on it.
No. Yeah, really.
They have their greedy little minds.
But.
But uh my, the one that I have, the uh versions for this year will do forty, forty-five. Do them all with a sixty amp battery, seventy, seventy watt voltage. They'll climb up and give it goes.
How long do those, how long?
About a hundred, depending on how you ride it.
The battery's fast.
It's about a hundred, they say two hundred if you're pedaling a lot, I don't pedal a lot. So, because that's against the law, you pedal your butt around town, so it just raises the throttle a lot.
Yeah, don't overwork yourself.
Yeah, mine, mine gets me, I'm at fifty miles an hour and two bars of half, out of five. So work them, I'll get a hundred, a little more.
And so what does it, the battery cost?
Oh, they cost seven, seven hundred to twelve hundred, depending on how much you can get. That's the most expensive part of life.
Wow.
But the other thing is that these bikes, the ones that are coming out that will do those speeds, will build, so the frames won't fall apart. You can't take, take these bones and put them on a ten speed and expect the ten speed to hold up long.
Right.
Too much torque.
Yeah, the, yeah.
Too much power, too much torque.
Yeah. I have those London, she rides, she has a regular. I don't know, do they come, not in the way, they're quite retired, she rides everywhere.
Costs a lot, especially, especially now, yeah, so what, three and a half bucks, four bucks, four and a half bucks?
Yeah.
The thing that they're pushing is to add speed.
Okay, it's seven thirty. Washington.
No, wait a second.
Okay, uh we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Tenino City Council for Tuesday, August, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, first item is agenda approval, we did add.
Some move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the minutes, we have minutes from eight, twelve, twenty, twenty-five?
No approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of uh, the eight, twelve, twenty, twenty-five minutes, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Consent calendar, this is a bit longer than normal, uh we have the consent calendar for August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh with payrolls and E T, E F Ts in the amount of fifty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. Claims checks three, three, five, two, three through three, three, five, five, two, in the amount of five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and five dollars and eighteen cents for a total of six hundred and nine dollars, two hundred, six hundred and nine, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventeen cents. We also have on the consent calendar, the amended consent calendar from July ninth through July twenty-second, consisting of payroll checks, three, three, four, four, zero and ETFs in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. And claims checks three, three, four, four, zero through three, three, four, six, five and E F Ts in the amount of fifty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and eleven cents for a grand total of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. And also excusable of Jeff Isel, he is in California, no legal license renewables.
No approval.
Second.
And the treasures report that was included, we talked about earlier. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No executive session or presentations, public comments, we have a public comment period, would you, sir, would you like to, any public comment you'd like to give?
It's in time to say my plea yet.
You can say it now or at the end of the meeting, whichever you per- prefer.
I'll say it right now.
Okay, if you don't mind signing the paper up there and.
I know, it's a violation of my fourth amendment, giving up my right to remain who I am.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm just that way, sir. Are you the new mayor?
Oh, I've been here a couple of years almost now.
Okay. I am commonly known here in the town as Birdman, I have that little shop right down here. Okay, I see quite a bit going on, I brought this up, you all remember one time before I was here. I see a lot of things go on and I report them. I've got papers, if I can have a meeting with you separately, I will bring, cause I bring them in here knowing the way I feel about the local Gestapo's.
Okay.
Every time I've done something good, like there was, earlier this year, there was a three-car pileup right there in front of my building.
Mm-hmm.
I could've just stood there and said, up it. I called an ambulance, cause a lady was screaming, she was hurt. I get a police officer, they don't come over and say, like they say, "Did you see this?" "Yes, I did." "Give me your ID," just like that, "Give me your ID." And I get quite rude, cause I'm a Vietnam veteran, I spent twenty-two years in the military and wrong answer to talk to me that way. I'm also a constitutionalist, I believe in the constitution. And I flip them off and I tell them, "You're on private property, get off." One time, three or four times since, since I've been open, I've had people break into the church. That church that's on the corner there.
Excuse me, you say break into the church, is that what you said?
They have broken through the back door and I, I've seen the door flopping in the breeze. Being a good citizen, I call it in, I've got the, I've got the cat reports to prove this. I get more, up until, I think it was a year, maybe la- last year, the year before, it happened. And most of the times the officers would, honk honk, I'd look over there, they'd go. And I'd wave like that. This one officer, I don't remember his name, came from there straight over to my parking lot, pulled in where I had my stuff displayed, got out and come over. Did you call this, yeah, "Give me your ID," card, same way. And that, and wrong answer. And I told him, "No, I'm not giving you," he was parked, let's say this is my, this is my building.
Mm-hmm.
I have my stuff displayed here, he was parked like this.
Mm-hmm.
He backed up and pulled up behind my car, which I jumped up to the back of it and covered my license plate. He made four attempts to obtain my license plate, which is illegals, illegal you can get. I called in the dispatch and reported what he had done and asked for the chief and the two police officers showed up. The one that originally did and, I think his name was Son John, or Officer Johnson, he stood back by his car, didn't come up. This guy accused me of being his name was Michael B. Horton and he is in the state prison for child molesting. This guy accused me of being that and when I talked to the old mayor and the chief, the basic thing came out of that is me and the mayor run this town, you do what we want, you won't have no problems. I split my button by constitutional rights, you have none. That's why I came here tonight to discuss this.
Okay.
I have been doing research. The next incident was happened coming over Chain Hill. Officer Lee was riding behind this elderly lady in her car, it was a red car, and he was tailgating her. And when I brought up a statement, which I still have, my copy of it, the chief comes back and says, "You don't know how to judge distance and on that road you can't determine whether he was too close or too far away or anything." My officer's doing what he's supposed to do. I'm a Vietnam sniper. If I can't judge distance, then I needed you to put a bullet in my head, I've been judging distance all my life. I used to be an avid hunter, when I came back from Vietnam, I swore I'd never, never shoot another living thing. Fishing don't count. But so, and I thought, I don't know, I thought, and from what I've researched, the you're a police officer, sir, and I filed a complaint with you on one of your officers, you're supposed to review that. Then it's suppo- from what I understood, it's supposed to go to a third party or say to you yourself.
Mm-hmm.
Since you're the mayor. To you, for you to review it and determine whether this officer was right or wrong.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't do that.
Okay.
And so, this is my complaint, if they're gonna have, if we're gonna have police, whether whoever bu- uh hires them or whatever, I think that every police officer in this town needs to get at least a hundred hour training on the constitution of the United States. I carry one in my car. They don't follow it, they make up laws, they, they, they psych people. Here's gonna be, when I confronted Officer Lee at his house, I get up, I go to him, I'll admit that. And I said, "If I did that, you'd give me a ticket, yep? You do that, what do you get?" He says, "I don't get nothing, I'm a police officer." According to what I've been researching over the last few. According to what I've been researching over the last few months, no, he's wrong.
Okay.
If I could, if I had the sheriff, I could have had the sheriff come there.
Three minutes is up.
And my time up?
Yeah.
Your time's up, but if you would like to meet with me, I'd be more than glad to sit down with you and talk.
Say again?
I said, your time is up, but if you would like to talk to me, if you want some more time to talk about anything, I'd be glad to meet with you.
I just have a couple more things to say.
Okay, well, there's another chance at the end of the meeting if you wanna stick around. We're supposed to limit it to three minutes.
I will sit down and wait. Or I can make an appointment to come to your office.
That would be great if you wanna do that. I'm here most days, so.
If 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 they could, uh, I'm in the phone book. My name is Mike Horton.
I'll come down and talk to you at your place. Set up a time if that's okay?
I'm only open on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays.
Is that is that okay if we wait till Friday?
Due to my medical conditions, I've only had nine heart attacks, eight stents in my chest. And, uh, that's why I I I gotta keep on my health, but there are the days that I'm okay.
Okay, I'll come down and talk to you on Friday. I'll stop by.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Uh-huh. Uh, I guess there's no other public proclamations, none. Old business, the six-year transportation improvement plan, which we had the public meeting last meeting on, is before you to approve. Is there any questions or I guess is there a motion?
Most.
This is the second reading?
This is the second, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, then you need to do the second reading before you make the motion.
Where is my? Forgot about the reading. Yep, I forgot. I got it here someplace. Uh, the resolution is to adopt a six-year street plan, whereas the city duly adopted a new transportation plan on July ninth, twenty twenty-four, and whereas the public director of public, the city's director of public works submitted his recommendation for updating his said transportation plan with the city's six-year street plan during a regular regularly scheduled meeting of the city council of Tenino on August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and whereas the city council conducted public hearing on this matter during regular scheduled meeting, August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Tenino, Washington as follows. Section one, exhibit A is attached here to, made part of here of and incorporated herein. By reference, together, this document constitutes the city of Tenino's twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-one six-year street plan. Section two, the resolution, together with exhibit A, shall be filed with the director of highways or the of the state of Washington with all possible speed. And three, the Tenino Planning Commission shall consi- shall consider this resolution during any process aimed at amending the city's current comprehensive plan adopted by the city council at a regular meeting scheduled, just got the wrongs, Aug. twelfth of August, twenty twenty-five, but it should be eight twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
Move approval of the second reading and to adopt it, adopt it as the third and move approval of the six-year street plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the street plan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Let's get back to my paper sheet here. The next item is the Springbrook Support Plus contract, which we talked about, ten thousand dollars, five thousand due at signing and five thousand due quarter one. This will add additional support work as we close out this year. Nancy gets up to speed on all the the things we need to do with our end-of-year reports and such.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Support Plus contract with Springbrook in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? November eleventh council meeting is Veterans Day. We just wanted to check in if the council wanted to re- leave it on that day, move it to another day nearby that or cancel the meeting. Our preference would be.
I think we keep the November eleventh meeting. It's rather important at this time of the year because of budgetary strengths.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to leave. I guess we don't even really need to do anything. We're leaving it on the original day, so we'll just leave it on the original day then. No, there we don't need a motion. We're not changing anything. No resolutions, no ordinances. We've done reports. Uh, public comment, too. No public here. Uh, announcements?
First is Thomas Potluck Barbecue, the thirteenth, September, three to five, uh, from noon to three over at, uh, Middle School.
Any other announcements?
At five o'clock, that's the same date, the food bank has their, uh, their.
Fundraiser.
From Newton.
And the Eagles.
Take the sale available.
From forty-eight, I think is the hours.
He's at forty-eight.
The football team has a jamboree Friday at five o'clock.
That's Friday. Twenty-ninth is Friday.
Yeah, they told us. Well, let me go check.
I will say they had a the coach of the football team call.
Flashy and, uh, Raymond himself.
I think I don't know if you remember, last year, I think our Crest Country team at after one of their practices or whatever it was, asked that they could use the pool that kind of the kids after a hot run went in and jumped in for a little bit. We did the same thing for the football team. They had practice on one of those ninety-degree days and they all came over and got their picture in the pool, so.
Oh, how fun. Oh, great.
It was a he was the coach was very appreciative.
Somebody posted a picture.
Yeah.
I didn't see it. Oh, that's great.
So, yeah. So anyway, that was a nice little thing to do for the football team and seemed like they enjoyed it, so just thought I'd pass that along. Other than that, no other discussion. Uh, the meeting is adjourned.